Open the meeting and start with the Pledge of the Religions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Callan Welsh.
Present.
Frank Ottenheim.
Present.
Joshua Snyder.
Present.
Mark Stanley.
Present.
Denny Sands.
Here.
Mark Sineman is absent and the village president is also absent tonight. So in his absence, the board by a majority vote selects a temporary chair from their members.
Anybody here want to do it?
How about you?
Particularly. I will.
Okay.
If we must.
There we go.
So why will I be moving moving down the agenda then?
Yep, you you run the agenda.
Okay. All right. Uh additions to the agenda.
I request to add the resignation of the village attorney under reports in action before the village engineer report.
Okay.
And I would also like to add, seeing this letter that we talk about hiring a new law firm tonight.
Generate even tragedies.
Firm that will go under new business. Yes.
What'd you say Frank?
I'd like to speak to the board about hiring a new attorney if we need one here.
Looks like we do.
Uh there's a few things that I would like to talk about. Discussion about hiring a new building inspector. The possible establishment of a Shabana events fund. Discussion about utility billing policy. And a temporary volleyball net at Perry Park.
I've got a question. If I may ask you. We didn't uh vote on who's gonna be in the chair. I think we should do that.
Is that roll call?
I know it'd just be a formality, but I think we need to have an election.
Frank dominated Callan, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll say no, just so we get it on record.
So the new building inspector is gonna go under old business. The events fund and utility billing go under finances. Under utility billing updates.
Okay.
Is the utility billing policy. The events fund is gonna go before utility billing, after treasurer's report.
Okay.
Okay.
I have another point on the agenda.
Yes.
If I may bring it up now. Okay, under uh adjudication. Number seven on the list. I think that needs to be tabled until we get an attorney here. I think we made a mistake last time by not waiting for an attorney.
Which one is that?
Number seven.
Seven, eight, one.
I think we made a big mistake by not seeking an attorney before the last meeting.
And to counter your point, I think an attorney can always be consultant. Correct?
No.
No, he can't.
No, he's not answering.
Pardon me?
No, he's not answering and quits.
Well, we we're gonna have to get a new attorney.
Yeah, let's get a new attorney, let him review it, and then we'll move forward. That's what we should've done last time.
Well, I guess I'm opposed to that, I think we need to move forward, so. Just two different opinions.
Do we have any other additions to the agenda?
Did you take a vote on that, or I didn't hear?
Uh the next thing is approval of agenda. We can add discussion of whatever.
Well.
Table it.
There's certain orders you gotta go through. Trying to help you along here.
Um so I think when we get to the agenda item, you can buy a motion to table it, um and then we can vote on it then, would be my opinion.
Yeah, we're still on number two additions to the agenda.
I agree, when we get to that, then that's when you can make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Okay. Approval of agenda, we need a roll call vote for that?
Uh we need a first and a second. I'll I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, citizens addressing the board, do we have any public comment? Thank you. Bill Tripp?
I'm gonna finish the handrail this week, and then Saturday I'll hand in the invoice for the cost of materials.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That's where I'm at.
And John Rude.
John Rude, 102 East Apache. Uh last meeting there was some discussion about the clerk and the full-time status. Uh I'd just like to go on the record and saying, this position started out as like a fifty-hour-a-month position, and now it's taking a hundred to a hundred and twenty hours. So I poke that in all your discussion, and I don't know where this discussion is going, but I wanna speak in favor of doing that and showing proper respect to the wonderful job that Jim does for us. And I hope you keep that in mind when you go through your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number five, reports in action. Uh A is village engineer.
Well, before that, 'cause I edited the agenda, the announcement that Keith Foster submitted a letter and email today to Don Ganter and myself, announcing his and his firm's resignation as village attorney for the village of Shabana effective immediately. He did represent the village for forty-two years, and I thank him for his time, so.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on that?
I believe the board should also thank him for his time, forty-two years.
Okay, five A, village engineer, Chastain and Associates, I believe is not here.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Uh excuse me, Callan.
Yeah.
Do they did they submit a report on the uh?
The only thing he had was the Shabana Fire Department wellhouse six drain tile bids, which is the page three in the packet. I sent it out to you guys in email too, the notice to bidders. Bids are being opened on five twenty-one at their Rockford office.
Okay, and I assume that we have to approve that, the board has to approve?
Then then they'll submit the bid tabulation and all the bid packets for, and then the board makes a decision from there.
So for now, the board does not have to approve anything?
No.
Okay.
But if you wanna go to the bid opening, you're more than welcome to. The other address is on page three.
Okay. Five A, one Shabana Fire Department wellhouse drain bid's being opened. Uh five B, public works report, Bud?
Okay, we got the meters and the plumbing back end for drill boxes for Route Thirty watering. And uh we had water in them, and water's going where it's supposed to be. We just need to set up at some time and give the information on when to run them, to water the plants and stuff that are there, and uh get all set up. Because they had it set up in October, and we like to reset it up this year. We shut off unpaid water meters, water services on Friday, and worked with Jen and Cindy. I called one company about the weed treatment for the three properties, and I need to find another company to call to at least get a couple prices for the water, the park at the water tower, Perkins Park and Purdy Park. I uh looked, called about garage door prices. I got one company called in, and the phone went out this morning, so I wouldn't even call anybody else. So I got one call out, and they're gonna give us some on that, and I'll call. We put the railing on in front of a building that's got muddy claws and the post office in it, put them on a couple weeks ago, and they fit. They're good, so we got the railing here, back together. Any questions?
Comment? Your railings look really nice.
Well.
They they really fit nice, don't they?
Yeah, and I mean, we did that for bad enough and they just slid right in.
Yeah, those are really great.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, moving on to five C, committee reports. Infrastructure committee, that's Mark, who is not present. Jen, should, do we move on and talk about this stuff anyway, or?
Oh yeah.
Okay. So five one I, um is discussion of sidewalk estimates.
Well, while you're pulling that up, I got a couple things on the sidewalk estimates.
Yeah.
I think what we had was an engineer's estimate for price.
Yes, Chastain did the estimate.
It's just an estimate?
Yes.
Okay. Seems like a lot of money to spend in one year, to me, on sidewalks. Seventy-two thousand dollars if the uh estimate is correct. And I think later in the in the meeting, we are talking about a new sidewalk ordinance, which would have the sidewalks at five feet wide, which just thinking about it, makes that estimate maybe twenty percent higher?
No, because on the estimate, it's got four feet width in spots, and a three and a half foot, and that would stay those footages.
Even with our new ordinance?
Yes. Because of how how much it is and where it's tying in at. They only quoted the five foot for three oh one West Cherokee.
But by the time these would be poured, we'd have a new ordinance.
The new ordinance is already in place.
We then we do have a new ordinance in place.
Mm-hmm.
And it calls for five-foot-wide sidewalks.
For new construction, for new sidewalks, and if you're doing a complete sidewalk.
I'm not sure that I I saw that in there, and if that is the case, that might be all right, but I think.
But no, what they quoted for footages on here is what the width would be. 'Cause I asked that question to make sure.
Those are not quotes, so they're just estimates?
Yes.
And, okay, I'm.
And he based it off, they based it off of the going rates for um everything this year. And other quotes they've done for for municipalities.
So we could be pretty sure that the quotes are
Should be pretty.
Pretty accurate.
Yeah. And based on the dollar amount anyways, if it's over thirty-five thousand, you gotta go out for bid.
So if we're only going for the sixty thousand dollars for the fuel tax, where does the other thirteen thousand or whatever come from?
Decide not to do them all and cut it in half, or less, or just determine what's more critical.
Have we gone already, sent our paperwork to MFT?
Uh-uh.
So you could up that amount?
You could do, yeah, you can do any amount on it.
I think probably we should uh kick this back to infrastructure committee. I kinda did my own sidewalk survey, took a lot of pictures, um and I I don't, my personal opinion is that it's not necessary to spend this much money on sidewalks, there are some that do need to be replaced, but um a lot of them, I I just don't think it's, it's not particularly time-critical, and given the state of the village's finances, I'm not sure if it's a good use of funds, so. I would like to talk about it more in an infrastructure committee meeting. So my thought is uh disable it um until we get something more firm.
I've got one thing there, I think we do have an emergency repair that needs to be made up by Olson's on the on the line I, where the tree was taken down. That that need, I think that needs to be repaired as soon as possible. And I don't know, Buddy's here, maybe Buddy?
The break? Where they took the tree out?
Where they did, yeah, that's that's really bad in some way.
Yeah, but we have a couple other ones that are sections that are missing, short ones. But yeah, that's a, it's a pretty good-sized break up towards where they took that big tree out. It's got a.
Yeah, I think marge tries to walk along there.
Yeah, and it's a dip.
And is that something that you guys could, you guys could fix that one? Cause you've done sidewalks.
We'll have to, we'll have to do something, because if if it doesn't go far farther forward, we can't have marge falling.
No, we can't, no. So that is something that you guys could could do.
But see, I think that, I think they had, on there, they had to do that whole area to replace. But we could probably patch it to.
I I think it is, yeah, I think it needs to be fixed. Maybe even the cement removed and I need to have marge walking on the gravel, but something needs to be done there, that's pretty bad.
Does that sound all right?
I don't know. Do we vote on that?
You want him to just go forward, then yes, you need to at least
With that one.
All in favor?
All in favor.
For Buddy to repair that one location.
I would make a motion that the public works department repairs the the sidewalk on north of Line I by Olson's house as soon as possible.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
Is there, Bud, is there one on West Navajo too?
West Navajo or? Yeah, there's a section of sidewalk missing there, yeah.
Okay.
But those are gonna be. You probably took pictures of most of the ones that we had.
Yeah.
It's down there where a tree was taken out, and that was late time.
Do we want to take care of this one too?
I think it's gravelled right now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would we have to amend that motion to take care of that one also?
I would think so. Or make another motion to take care of that one in particular?
Okay, I I would also make a motion to take care of the one on West Navajo where the tree was taken out.
That's the four oh four, or the three one three, or the two oh eight, Buddy?
Either four oh four.
Four oh four?
No, maybe not.
Two oh eight, I think is the one.
Two oh eight, yeah.
Did you want to show a better side of that picture?
Can you pass that down? I was two oh eight.
Is there a second for the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, um any further discussion? Um consideration, approval of I dot MFT resolution twenty twenty-five oh five nineteen R one. I'm thinking we table this.
It's tabled until the sidewalk decisions are made.
Okay.
Have a vote on that?
Yeah, we gotta have a dollar amount for it, so until something's decided for a total dollar amount for MFT funds.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on, table on the motion, table on this?
Yeah, we can just do all in favor. Or need a motion in a second?
We want a motion to to table the consideration and approval of the MFT resolution for sidewalks.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, five C three, consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty-five oh five nineteen R fifteen to purchase smokers' outpost receptacles for downtown one seven three sixty-one. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, me personally, I'm I'm fine with it, I think it's, you know, it probably saves public works some time picking up cigarette butts off the sidewalks, so. You know. I think it's a good idea personally. So I guess we're looking for a motion to
Motion to move, motion to approve.
Second.
This is a roll call situation or?
Yep, money's involved, so we gotta roll call vote. Mark Stanley?
Yeah.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on, five C two, finance committee, Mark Sineman is not present. Uh five C three, development committee, Mark Stanley, do you have anything for us?
No, I need to get a date set up for uh for us to meet. I'll get with Jen, so we can get something set out and see if uh these guys are available.
Sounds good. Five C four, public affairs committee, Denny Sands.
Yeah, I'll need some help here from Jen, uh the uh first item, number one, there, oh, is that postcard sent out to everybody?
The postcard would be on the spreadsheet, I've got it, there's eighteen hundred of them that would go out. That's Shabana Lee and Waterman, it's the entire zip codes for each. If it was just Shabana Lee, it would be eight fifty going out, and just Shabana would be six fifty going out.
Have we ever done this before?
We did it for the town hall, but we just did it within the village limits for the town hall. And that was, the postcards, when we did that, cost seventy dollars, and the stamps cost four hundred. So this would be postcards for two hundred, two thousand postcards for two hundred dollars, 'cause you gotta order them in exact quantities after a certain point. And to do the EDDM, direct mailing through the post office to resident, it would be four hundred dollars, so it'd be just that would be six hundred dollars if you wanted to do it. On the spreadsheet, that was part of this, it's the first portion.
It's only six hundred, not seventeen hundred.
The seventeen hundred includes if you wanna do posters, the sixteen by twenty posters, which do the entire day's schedule. To do banners, we have one banner left, and it's in so-so condition, the other banner must've gotten destroyed last year. And there was a request to do more banners. And we're down to seven arrow-to-the-park-yard signs from the fifteen or something we started out with.
Okay, are the are the arrow signs on here?
Yeah, arrow-to-park-yard signs includes stand.
Okay, I see.
And those amounts can be changed, the quantities.
Anybody else have any questions? I make a motion and we approve it then?
I would second that motion.
Will we just approve in the the postcards, or are we doing the whole thing here?
Just aye, or number one?
Be the whole thing, the postcards, the posters, the banners, the yard signs, and advertising with one oh two point three.
You were proposing this amount for these things.
And the committee's talked about this, and this is what they want?
Yes.
I seconded the motion, so. Uh roll call vote please.
Roll call vote to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh five nineteen R two. I put not to exceed seventeen hundred dollars, it should be less than what's on it. Denny Sands?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yeah.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty-five oh five nineteen R three to approve rental of tents, tables, chairs, snow cone machine, inflatable from Chinoc slash Big Time Rentals for Fourth of July festival in the amount of fourteen forty.
The question was raised, that I was asked if we could reduce tables, tents, and chairs based on the use of them. And the feedback I got from people present last year was that yes, we could try with one less twenty by ten tent, which would be three fewer tear tables and thirty fewer chairs, which would decrease the total amount by two hundred and twenty dollars, taking it down to one thousand two hundred and fifteen. The people, quite a few people used under the tents, those that were eating from the food truck during bingo, and people were sitting down underneath there 'cause it was shaded, 'cause it was kind of a hot day, I don't remember the day last year, 'cause I got sick that day. So it's up to you guys, though. It also includes an inflatable and a snow cone machine. The inflatable is a castle with ball pit and has slides coming out of it.
Uh I will say that we are expecting a larger crowd this year. So my preference would be that we approve the larger amount, we talked about it in public affairs committee, which will be on Wednesday. And if we if we don't need it, then then we won't, we won't rent it.
But what about the inflatables and the insurance?
The Sarah got back to me, we talked, we chatted back and forth on email, and her insurance will cover it, so our insurance is fine that we do it. Uh the rule with our insurances is that if we don't own it, they don't cover it. So whoever's renting it to you has to provide the village as additional insured on their insurance for the inflatable. So that would go the same if you wanted to borrow from the fire department. Is one, we'd be responsible for inflating it, inspecting it, and making sure it was good, but our insurance wouldn't cover it.
Okay, so the gist is the rental company's insurance is covering it?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would still?
And they install it, they put it in place for us. All we, the village has to provide, or the committee has to provide, is attendant for the entire time that it's there.
Yeah, that was my question. So we would need to?
During the festival hours. You don't have to overnight attend it, but they'll, I don't, they might install, if we go with them, they might install the afternoon, evening before, they might wait and install early that morning, last year they were doing it at six or seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, they've always installed that morning.
And then they'll take down the end, that evening, afternoon.
Okay, so looking for a motion to?
Before we vote, I'd like to ask a question on this.
Yeah.
Can can we just approve an amount and not have to go through all these different votes to rentals and and can we just approve an amount?
Yep, not counting the DJ, it would be the three thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. The DJ gotta decide which one, so I couldn't put down on the spreadsheet which one, how much it was gonna be.
And they're number four. I know four.
So we could just approve this?
All the rest you could approve in a long?
At thirty-seven hundred dollars or thirty-seven fifty and
Thirty.
Not not to exceed that?
Thirty-five fifty.
And not and not have to go and make a motion, we do that? Now.
Is the motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-five oh five nineteen R three and twenty twenty-five uh oh five nineteen R fourteen?
Yes.
Okay.
I I guess along those same lines, if the if the committee has picked up a DJ, why don't we do it all at once? Is there's this amount of money spent it, or not?
That's fine, you can discuss the DJ quotes and decide what you wanna do.
Does the committee discuss them?
No.
No, we didn't really have a chance last time, and our next meeting is on Wednesday.
Running on an accelerated schedule. My, I think my preference would be if we went with our. Um, my, I think my preference would be if we went with RPMs DJ service, I think.
That was the eight fifty, I think?
Yeah, that gives us the best bang for the buck, I thought.
What's your review, Danny? So, I don't know if you have reviewed them, but the cheapest one, I think, was, he gave it up with, with you, Callan? He was four hundred?
Yeah, the cheapest one was Benny.
But he doesn't offer karaoke, so if we want karaoke, we'd have to go with the eight fifty quote, I think?
Yeah, I thought RPMs gave us the best bang.
Yeah, I think eight fifty's probably good.
So that would be a total of we got a total of?
Forty-four hundred dollars.
And I think in the appropriation from last year, it was approved at five thousand dollars, right? The, uh, Fourth of July festival?
Okay. Um, there really wasn't an approval last year, it was ten thousand overall for economic development.
Okay.
We did spend three thousand last year.
I would make a motion to go to five thousand dollars in, under the, uh, committee's approval, whatever the committee needs to spend up to five thousand dollars. I think that would be fine. I'd make that motion.
Okay.
I second it.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
And Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Okay, um, do, do we need to go to-
So we're at, uh, V.
Okay, V, consideration and approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R five to waive special event fifty dollar, uh, food truck fee for Fourth of July. Uh, do I have discussion?
I think, uh, the taco trucks, the one that's agreed so far, and they have an annual permit, so they don't pay the special event fee anyways. So if any, it's for if anybody else agrees to food truck it.
Uh, I was wondering, so it says from eleven AM to three PM. Um, we haven't really discussed the hours yet, so I was wondering if maybe we should just waive it for the whole day, in case we wanted to change up the hours?
Well, we've always done the food truck starting at eleven, 'cause that's when the pancake breakfast ends, so we're not
Okay.
interfering with the fire department's pancake breakfast, seven until eleven.
Okay.
It's up to the committee then, but, but that's why it was eleven o'clock, 'cause we've always not done food till
Um,
they end.
In that case, can I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R five with the amendment that it's eleven to six?
Second question, um, have we talked to Madalax Coffee?
She has not returned my calls.
Okay, and does the fire department sell coffee?
No, they have, you buy your breakfasts and you can get coffee with that, but no.
So maybe we wanna have earlier hours so that Madalax could come maybe for the pancake breakfast, was the question.
There's coffee available to pancake breakfast?
There is not available, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's free coffee, basically?
Pancake breakfast is, donate if you can.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Or donate what you can.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote to approve to waive special event fee of fifty dollars for food trucks at the Fourth of July festival from eleven AM to six PM. Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on, uh, we have consideration approval of twenty twenty five Fourth of July parade resolution, twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R six. Any discussion on that?
This is required by IDOT and it's their form.
I just have one question about this. Um, it says that the village will be paying for flaggers and things, which I think we have the county-
The county comes and the village has never written a check to the county to do this, I don't think. I don't know if they charge us on their invoices, I don't think so.
Okay.
I was just wondering what that would be, if anything.
Hmm?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Fourth of July parade resolution, twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R six.
I'll second that.
Um, this is a-
We can do it all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, five D sheriff reports, review sheriff reports. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I, again, would like to, uh, the reports are fine, but I would like the mayor or the village clerk to talk to the sheriff about more patrol out on, uh, Preserve Road. West of Shabana Road, that's a real raceway, that can, school gets out and they're running seventy miles an hour out there, so. I'd, I'd like that done.
Hold on just a second. West Preserve Road, West of Shabana Road, is that what you said?
West of Shabana Road, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, I'm gonna move on to five E, village clerk, five E one, approval of regular board meeting minutes from April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Um, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, two-
I'm sorry, before you go to the next thing, can I insert something here?
Yes.
So, just to let you guys know, for the first time ever, the village clerk and the deputy clerk are gonna attend a clerk seminar called Back to the Basics on June twelfth and thirteenth in Peoria. It's, um, it covers pretty much all the basics of the job, and it's got professionals that come, anything from OMA to record keeping to everything. So, and this'll be the, I've been with the village since twenty eighteen, and this'll be the first seminar of that sort I've been able to go to, so I'm kind of excited about it. I just wanted to let you guys know.
What do we have a cost?
Seventy-five dollars per person plus hotel.
Mileage back and forth or anything?
I wasn't too worried about that, so I can, but I wasn't going to.
I think you should.
Take a guess.
I think you should.
I think you should too.
I think we should.
Turn in a travel report, then.
Yeah, at the very least, like whatever the federal rate is for mileage, I say we reimburse you for that.
Okay.
We had a motion for that.
I can get you numbers.
And do we have a slot in the budget for something like this, trading?
Teaching.
In a real K budget ways, I would assume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, are you good, Jen?
I am not.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you for letting me insert.
No problem. Um, so E two raffle applications, E two I approved, Shabba Community Church hog raffle?
Yep, they were approved on May seventh for their first application.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that?
No, not on the approved one.
Okay. Uh, next is consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R seven to waive five-year requirement for building Shabana Together raffle, raffle application.
And that is per the DeKalb County Clerk's office, the county waives the five-year requirement for not-for-profits only, as long as they're in good standing, provide a copy of their constitution, bylaws, or other documentation. Um, and is identified and maintains a valid nonprofit certification from the IRS, which building Shabana's got bylaws and valid nonprofit certification from the IRS, which is, I provided.
Yeah, so from my understanding, the five-year requirement is a state law, correct?
Yeah, it's in the statute.
Yeah, and it, there's no exempt, there's, it doesn't specify that you're allowed to exempt it, correct? I, I, I wanted to ask the attorney, but since he's not present, or because we don't really have one either. Um, what I'm wondering is, I would like to approve this. Um, would it be possible if building Shabana Together partnered with a different five oh one C three that can be approved without our exemption to do this?
I'll have to take that back to building Shabana Together.
Unless everyone else is comfortable with just leaving it without being certain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little unclear as to what the legalities of this are. Um, because I, I did briefly look up the state statute and, and our ordinance, and I'm just not sure if we can do this legally. So I would wanna run this by an attorney before I said yes to this.
You should be able to prove that subject to the state law, so if you wanted to approve it tonight, give it your stamp of approval, and then leave it subject to whatever the state law. You won't hold them up for another month for your approval. If you're not comfortable with that, that's fine.
If it's regulated by the state, then I don't know how that holds us liable.
I guess my question is if there's a state law and a county law, why do we need to get into, into issuing licenses? Other than now we have a we've got an ordinance for such raffles?
So, the reason behind it was because there was interest in doing a Queen of Hearts, which could have a much higher, uh, pot than the fifty thousand dollars allowed by the county. So in municipalities like Earlville, Leland's reactivated theirs for Queen of Hearts and other municipalities, the ordinance is based off of theirs.
Was it for a non-profit?
For not-for-profits to do the larger pots.
And that's the county's ordinance, or that's-
The county's ordinance is only a maximum pot of fifty thousand dollars. And technically, if, uh, our raffle ordinance is not on the books, then anybody within the village limits would need to register with the county and pay a fifty dollar fee to hold a raffle within the village limits, because if we're not the jurisdiction over it, then the county becomes the jurisdiction over raffles. And that's per state statute, too.
I'm pretty sure we've had a bunch of raffles and Donna never paid for license anyway. I, I just, I think we're we'll put way too many rules in for the village Shabana. I realize the county could come in and say no, but they haven't.
Personally, I think we should do things legally, so I think having an ordinance is probably good. I don't know if the ordinance is, I haven't looked at it that closely, but-
All right, so here's the deal, I wanna make a motion to approve it. Because it's not holding us liable, we don't wanna hold them up, and if someone tells us otherwise, we're covered, correct? Because it's regulated by the state and the county?
Yeah, and the, uh, yeah, and the not-for-profit is responsible if anything goes AWOL with their raffle. Or anybody doing a raffle is responsible for that. They either do a bond or they waive the bond and they assume the responsibility either way. So it doesn't become like Woodstock two thousand and ten.
Any further discussion?
No, I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Nothing else to say than the fifty bucks, Frank.
That's great, they need it.
So roll call vote to approve waiving the five-year requirement? Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder, sorry.
I'll go with that, same.
It's either yes or no, you don't have a vested interest, uh, standing.
Okay, yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to number six, uh, financial. Uh, I believe we had a couple of things added, right? So, then, so that go first, Jen?
No. Start with what's printed.
Okay. Uh, we have approval of bills and payroll for May twenty twenty five. Do we need a motion to approve the bills and payroll?
Yes.
Okay.
For anybody that doesn't know, as of this year, twenty twenty five, the federal government's making us do payroll twice a month, 'cause they, we're requiring federal taxes be filed twice a month due to the amount of total federal taxes paid monthly. We have paid more than the threshold for the past three and a half years on federal taxes. Just took them three and a half years to notify us.
So with a monthly meeting, do we have to approve the payroll ahead of time? How do we do that?
It can't be approved ahead of time, 'cause some people are paid off of hours worked. So you're approving what's already been paid for the month.
How do we comply with the state, with the federal law, then?
Taxes, payroll's done on the first and the fifteenth every month.
Okay, but-
And then taxes are paid immediately following each of those payrolls.
But don't the payrolls need board approval?
Yes, yours. I, there's, unless you wanna do a special meeting to approve payroll each, twice a month?
I don't, but how do we do it?
You approve of the rates when, at the beginning of the year, and then you approve the month's payroll at the board meeting. Even though it's already been paid out, at least you're approving it.
Yes, you gotta figure it out, it's all right.
Any further discussion?
I do on bills. The, uh, the bill for the porta potties in Purdy Park, is that monthly?
Yes. And that was, that bill is from when they were reinstalled, including the hand wash station.
So it's four hundred and some dollars a month?
It'll go down a little bit from that. Last year it was around three hundred a month.
So it's not a month, monthly bill that we have this time?
No, the, yeah, this one's from the one where they reinstalled the hand wash station and a porta potty. One of them remained for the winter, it did get used. Both porta potties and the hand wash station got used a lot last year.
They got used a lot, you say?
Anything else?
I have a question about the Civic Plus, I'm guessing that's a yearly fee?
That's annual, that's the website and the domain.
And does that, so the Civic Plus is also the same company that does Munich Code, right?
Yes, and that's a separate invoice every year.
That's separate?
Yeah. And we save ten percent total of each of them from, uh, having two things through them.
Okay. I think that was basically it. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve bills and payroll for May twenty twenty five?
I approve it.
Is it a roll call or a?
Roll call.
Roll call vote?
Anything with money is a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote to approve bills and payroll. Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, moving on, we have approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R sixteen for I E P A loan payment, number five, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, seventy-three cents, due June eighth, twenty twenty five.
EFT number is my reference number that gets keyed, because it's an electric fund transfer. They don't accept checks, you have to pay it online through their bank site. And this is twice a year. This is the wellhouse number six in the looping project that was done in 2021, 22. And it's the same amount.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, June and December.
So it's $68,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
Probably, or $70,000 a year.
Yep.
I guess we got paid, or they repossess the wellhouse? Is that the, what happens?
They start fining you.
This is for Shavonah Road, right?
No, this is the wellhouse, and, yeah, no, Shavonah Road's a much lower dollar amount.
Okay.
Because I included the paperwork with this, for you guys to see, that had the financial summary, which the, it had $400,000 forgiveness off of a 1.6 million. So the total amount financed was a little under 1.3 million. And it also contained the breakdown, starting in 2023, of the monthly payments through 2042.
Do we have any other discussion?
I'll motion to approve paying the invoice.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on, we have donation requests. Consideration approval of Resolution 2025-05-19R8 to make donation to Shavonah Fireworks.
And I did provide you guys with the tracker that I've used since I've been clerk. Because I got, got asked this a number of times, for what's been paid in the past to everybody we've donated to.
I have to abstain of that one, if I'm in the committee.
What's that?
I have to abstain to the, the voting on this.
Alright.
Do we have any discussion?
The disc, yeah.
We need to consider a dollar amount, right? Or is that already?
Someone can motion with the dollar amount.
Oh, it's, uh, what was this one?
Last year they did 800, previous couple, few years they did 500.
500.
I guess for a discussion, as long as we have a committee member here, all we're doing with donations, Danny?
It's obviously lower this year because of the controversy with the park. So we need extra money from the other donors. So if you could chip ins, you know, some extra, it would certainly go a long ways.
They had a reserve in the past, the monies, do they still have that? I mean, are they able to pay for the display now, or?
I don't know what the current balance is, but I know it's, uh, Steve Kloppenschein said it's considerably less than what we had last year at this time.
Because of donations not coming in?
Right. And we sent, we sent flyers out to Lee, Chev, and Waterman, and our return was drastically lower. Everybody thinks that, you know, the tribe should pay for it.
Does the committee feel that the amount of people going into the park that would normally donate will be down for the same reason?
Probably. You, you don't know what people are thinking, but, we do get big crowds every year. That doesn't mean they donate, you know, but they, we get big crowds. People love it. And this year we're bringing back the, the flag at the end of the show. Last few years we cut the flag out because it's got to be so expensive, but we put it back in this year to, because we like the flag at the end of the show.
Do you know what this year's spend is on fireworks?
What's that?
Do you know how much they're spending this year on fireworks?
It'd be around $15,000, that's all I know. And we use the, uh, the way we've always operated was, we have enough money to pay for this year's, but we're raising now for next year. That's the way it would work.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Resolution doesn't have a dollar on it?
It, it has 500 in it.
Oh. Can be that, it can be any, whatever you want.
It was supposed to be blank, so you have to say it.
I thought it was, but I just thought that again.
So you can motion for a dollar amount?
I'd make a motion that we do the $500 as shown in the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote to donate $500 to Shavonah Fireworks. Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Denny abstains, but motion carries.
Next, we have consideration approval of Resolution 2025-05-19R9 to make donation to Lee Rollo, Shavonah Community Chest. This one also has a dollar amount of $250.
That's the most that's ever been donated.
Do we have discussion on this? If there's no discussion, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the $250.
I'll second that motion. Roll call vote?
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
I do have a question before we move on. The Shavonah Community Church, does that get donated to, for the winter festival at a different time?
Yes, that's in December, January. After, because we use the church basement, so it includes, it's a donation to the church that also helps them cover the payroll to clean the basement the rest of the way. The festo, the craft people do some cleanup and sweeping that and put tables away.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
The church secretary is pretty good about letting us know if we're doing good or not.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, we have the treasurer's report as of April 30th, 2025. What do we got, Cindy?
The report's in there of what we have in the bank.
Okay. I, I have one question for you, if you don't mind. Do we have any outstanding reimbursements that we're waiting for?
Yep, we have, we're still waiting, we haven't heard anything since we last talked a little bit about the uptown monies coming in.
Yes, there's 158,000, I think it is, I could be a little off, of the ITEP grants reimbursements for Fairgram. I can follow up and see if there's a status on the check yet. Have they all been submitted, last I was told, a few weeks back? We're just waiting on the state to cut the check and send it to us. So I'll follow up and I can email out an update.
And then we're supposed to have 65,000 come in that was being used for Patch Street. And they keep telling me that it's still coming, and it's going to be applied to those bills even though the project's done. But so far, I haven't gotten any.
Do we have outstanding bills for Patch Street?
Oh, no, they're all paid.
So, so.
That's part of why we're so low.
Okay, so, but we'll get that 65,000 back in cash then?
That's the intent.
Okay.
If they come through with that money like they promised.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, do we have a, a breakdown of anticipated revenues?
Yeah, I, I put that together at the beginning of each year. I haven't done it yet for this year.
I wonder if we could get that again, just, because I haven't seen it. I'd like to know what the anticipated revenues are.
Okay, when I put it together, probably this next month, you'll have it for the June meeting.
Okay, and then do we have a budget that we go off of?
The appropriations is, we don't have a budget, we have appropriations. And so, as I've said before, the appropriations is telling the public, this is the amount of funds we may spend, doesn't mean we're going to spend them. And then when you guys decide what it is, like tonight you've gone through of what we can spend for the 4th of July, that go, that's our budget for the 4th of July. We have appropriations right now of, I, I think that's a, one that I have a question by kind, but I'll get it down to my computer will cooperate. 4th of July, 5,000 is what was, put in appropriations that is in for you guys to approve tonight.
Which they did.
So basically, you tell me what's going to be spent. I mean, the appropriations telling the public we may spend $5,000 on 4th of July, but yet then we ask you for permission to spend that amount. So you guys approve tonight, 5,000, on the 4th of July.
I guess maybe I'm a little slow on this, but I, I think we ought to have a budget set, not just an appropriation, we could spend up to this much. I would think we should have a budget that this is all we're going to spend.
Okay.
If we need to spend more than that, we'd have to approve it.
Right.
But it, I don't see that, I mean, there's some astronomical figures in here, like 150,000 for Purdy Park. That's, we should have a budgeted amount that we'd spend for Purdy Park, not, maybe we just.
When I tried to do a budget, I was told that where you appropriate, we don't do budgets. And so, we've always just followed the appropriations. And each time something's being worked on, like Purdy Park, just because we say, what did you say it was?
150,000, yeah.
Yeah. Then, when they are going to do something, it comes to the board, and you guys approve what it is they're wanting to do. And I'm always asked, well, what did we appropriate for? So I can say, yeah, we appropriated for that amount.
Who told you we didn't have to have a budget?
The lawyer.
I.
And as you can see, we've always, for the most part, stayed under.
I, I see. Well, I thought I saw quite a few on last year's appropriation that we went over on.
Individual lines we might have. But bottom line, the auditors told me that, just watch the bottom line as far as whether I go back and submit to the county that we're changing.
Your appropriation.
Right.
But I guess I'm looking for something that would say this is the amount of money we're going to spend. I mean, there's, to me, there's some really ridiculous figures in here.
Well.
For some things that we may not even do.
Right. It doesn't hurt that we put it in there, doesn't mean we're going to spend it. But I understand what you're saying, and that's why you guys are looking at this. No one has, I mean, I've put in what I've been given, what's been talked about. But this isn't approved yet, this is the second reading tonight, that if it's, you know, if you guys all are in agreement with it, you can approve it.
Well, uh, no, I'm, there's a lot of things that I, I questioned in here.
Okay.
In appropriations, it just, this, to me, there's a whole lot of money we're appropriating. I guess, I think what you're telling me is we can spend up to the amount we appropriate, and if we go over that, then we have to go back to.
Good money.
I think we should have a budget set that.
And this appropriation, like, I don't know why the 150 was in there, but it was in there last year. I carried it over to this year. This is the second reading, and no one said anything more. And I have given you the expenses that were spent last year for Purdy Park and the pathway are the two that are at 150 appropriation.
We're still on treasurer's report for now. But I'll have something to say about appropriations when we get that, too, so.
So I guess I shouldn't say any more about it, then?
Yeah, we're almost there.
Hold your thought, Chris.
Yeah. I, I, one more question for you. When should we expect the annual treasurer's report?
Um, I will try and have that ready for you next month at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no further discussion.
Will it be?
I think I have 90 days, I didn't have time to look it up.
From the end of the previous fiscal year?
Yes.
Uh, we have utility billing, updates, issues, concerns. Or no, uh, did, did we insert?
Establishing the events fund.
Oh, the events fund, yeah, I wanted to ask about that. We would like to have a dedicated events fund. I'm not sure if our funds are like prescribed by state law or not, you might have a better idea. But if it's possible to have a dedicated fund for that, we would love to collect donations throughout the year. So that in the future, we're not asking the village for.
The village cannot collect donations, they can only get sponsorships.
Okay.
We're not a not-for-profit, so we can't, we don't ask for donations, but we can ask for sponsorships.
Okay.
Are we making a profit?
No.
No, but there's a statute for municipalities.
What would you do with, um, so what I'm trying to do is find out what you're planning on that, so I can see whether it's already covered under, like, economic development.
Well, my thought is, I, I would prefer to collect donations for events throughout the year, rather than trying to do all at once. And I would like in the future, we'll be able to fund these events from voluntary contributions. So, you know, that'll be something that, I guess we'll have to look for a 501(c)(3) to partner with.
Do you know the answer to that? I have no clue.
You can partner with 501(c)(3), I can ask Building Shavonah Together, I'm one of the officers of that, if they'd be willing to do some, help with some fundraising for the village for events. Create a little pot.
Sounds good. So moving on, we have utility billing, updates, issues, concerns. Discussion on $30 debt reduction fee on water bills.
Okay, that's several things, which do you want to start with?
Debt reduction.
Yeah, the, the $30 debt reduction fee, I guess some of us had questions about that.
Uh, yeah, so I brought that one up. I just wanted to know, is this a permanent fee? And what is it being used for?
The debt reduction is being used to help reduce, like, these payments we have for IEP-A. That's what the money's collected for, to help pay down our own loans.
Is that, is that prescribed? So if we pay off that loan, does it automatically fall off?
No.
Or it's just?
Once it was put on, it's always stayed on.
Okay. Yeah, and I did look, I did look briefly on, at our revenue from that, because that's broken out of the sever line, I am, the debt reduction fee. So for last year, we spent more on interest on loans than we did on the debt reduction fee, does that sound right?
Sounds right.
Okay. Yeah, so that would explain why we still have that debt reduction fee.
So if we were to pay off all of the IEP loans, the, the fee would still be on the bill, then?
It would be on the bill until the board decided it wasn't on the bill. On the, yeah, it would have, the board would have to decide to take it off.
Okay.
And does everyone in the village pay this debt reduction fee?
Everyone that has a utility bill.
Just if it's garbage, they pay it?
Not garbage. So the people out in that subdivision out there, they have garbage owing.
So they don't pay a debt reduction fee?
No. Because they have no services out there. They don't get, well, they have water from us, but they don't have. No, because they have no services out there. They don't get, well, they have water from us, but they don't have, um...
No, they don't have water from us.
No, they don't.
No, they have just garbage. Yeah, that's why they don't have.
And if they don't have sewer, do they have the, their reduction fee?
Yes.
I, I know there was a, a time, a long time ago, that we paid off the debt that we had, and the debt reduction fee stayed on. We didn't, we weren't able to take it off.
Right.
We took on a lot more debt since then.
Yeah.
I see the, the debt reduction fee is another form of tax.
It's a form that the board can collect money, yes.
Do we have any further discussion?
Could I also just point out it's a sixty dollar per quarter, twenty dollar per month fee?
That's, so we're...
Thirty's not the correct amount.
So we're looking at, at taking the debt reduction fee in half?
No, no, no.
Every quarter, anybody that has water and/or sewer with us pays sixty dollars debt reduction fee on their utility bill. Every three months, yep.
So it's twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars per month.
Is it, has it, was that the same last year?
But, yeah.
Okay.
So what are we considering here? Raising it? Ten dollars a month?
I don't know why, why it was questioned.
This is just discussion.
Yeah.
We're not considering anything at the moment, but we can in the future. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on to fiscal year twenty-six appropriations, second reading.
Do you have anything to add on utility billing?
Oh, um, eight thousand dollars for the house that just sold. I had communication again today with the person who we sent the bill to, and she told me they no longer have that tenant, or that place, because it did sell on sheriff's sale. I just got notice from the county last week that, and gave me the name of who owns it. And I was waiting for the lawyer to get back from vacation to ask him, because they have some money they're holding, and yet I haven't gotten the money that's owed. So, and we did put a lien on it. So, um, I'm in limbo without a lawyer to go to with this letter.
This was one oh-three list Cherokee house that was foreclosed on. Sheriff's sale was March twenty-seventh.
Just out of curiosity, what happened there? Did they have a pipe burst, or?
I'm, we're not sure. We had the water shut off, and then they contacted us and wanted to know, um... What was their question? Um, anyways, they're the ones that told us there was water damage in the house. And we're like, how could there be water damage? We had it shut off. And when we read it, it was a huge amount. And, um, so they were going to their insurance company, um, it was a lawyer, a realtor that had it at the time, and they were going to their insurance company and then would pay it. Well, I never heard anything. Um, I keep following up, and then this other girl contacted us and needed the amount, and that's when we filed the lien. And, but then it sold on sheriff's, and they said sheriff's sales are handled completely different. So I just finally got, last week, the person's name or the agency that owns it now, so.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Okay, in that case, we'll move on to fiscal year twenty-six appropriations, second reading. There is no consideration or approval or anything like that on this, so I guess this is just discussion. Okay.
Well, if you're okay with it, it can be approved tonight, because this is the second reading.
I think that we need to kick this back to the finance committee because there's some changes that I would like to see. I know there's some changes that people on the finance committee would like to see. We have until the end of June to pass this, I believe, so.
Do you, either of you know the answer about that? Do we have it until the end of June?
Yeah.
It needs to be passed at the June regular board meeting, the fourth Monday.
Okay. So who's the chair of the finance committee?
Mark.
Senator.
Senator.
Okay.
I think we had a tentative date for sometime in June, but we didn't decide on a date, right?
I can send an email out and get everybody's input, and we can get a date.
Okay.
But on behalf of Cindy, can I say if you do have changes you'd like to see to it, provide them to her, and she'll make some updates on it for the finance meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on that? We'll move on to seven.
Point of order. You guys never approved the treasury report, did you?
Nope, thank you. Need a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report.
A motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Exactly.
Roll call vote. Callan Welsh?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Didn't miss anybody? Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Ordinances, consideration approval?
We had, um, utility billing policy should be discussed under utility billing here.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Cindy, I had one, one more question for you. Let me remember what it was. What's our, what's our late fee policy for?
It's ten percent of whatever the current bill is if they do not pay by six o'clock on the due date, which is thirty days after the quarter ends. And those fees are applied after six o'clock and put in the mail the next morning.
Okay. So it's ten percent of whatever the total is immediately after the due date?
Yep.
And if there, if another thirty days goes by, is there any additional late fees?
Fifteen days later, so forty-five days after quarter ends, um, they then are charged the administrative shut-off term on fee, and they are shut off then the next day. So they have forty-five days to pay it in full.
Okay. And what is the shut-off fee?
Hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question on that.
Okay.
Does interest accrue over time?
What do you mean by interest? The fees are on the bills, and yeah. Then the next quarter, um, if they still haven't paid, I mean, they've been shut off, they still get a bill quarterly, whether they're on or off.
But does it increase over time, or is it the same?
It's, well, then the next quarter, if they haven't paid or a portion isn't paid, then that's getting charged, the ten percent late fee when those late fees are figured again.
So it's ten percent extra per month, basically, or?
Not per month, because it's forty-five per quarter. Yeah.
Okay, uh, so now we're moving on to consideration slash approval of twenty-two-five oh-five nineteen A. An ordinance repealing the administrative adjudication ordinance. We have discussion on this.
I would caution you to get a legal opinion of it.
Josh, I believe you had a question about the wording that was on there.
Yeah, so my main question was, I'm fine discussing whether or not we should vote on this.
Did you answer my request, or my statement?
Do we want to discuss on whether or not we should even talk about this, but right now?
I, I think that we should discuss it.
Well, what'd you say? You think you should discuss it?
Yeah, I think we should discuss it.
Okay, well, let's discuss it. I think we got to be very, very careful when we got members voting on stuff that may or may not, uh, involve some financial that they order, you know, some, some dollar amount that they may order toward, or owe, not order, but owe to that person. The same thing that you, that we did last, uh, at the last meeting, we shouldn't have done, you know. We had people voting on stuff that they possibly, quite possibly owed and connected with those ordinances. And we got to be really cautious on that kind of stuff. I'm not saying who's right or who's wrong. What I'm saying is, by state statute, you're not allowed to vote on it.
Okay, the administrative adjudication is, uh, it's not a tax. It's not, like, we're not talking about any particular fees or anything like that.
Well, fine, same thing as money.
I, it's not, I mean, it's not imposing like a tax.
I mean, I voted with you guys last week, or a few days ago, but I, I wish I had, to tell you the truth, because I think I was wrong. And I'll be free to admit I was wrong.
Josh, what was your question about the?
Uh, it was basically, so in the ordinance that imposes or allows the administrative adjudication, it creates a new chapter five of the, of the Village Code of Ordinances. And then on the board packets, uh, ordinance to repeal this, it talks about chapter sixteen, article five. I was just wondering if that would be correct.
Because when the ordinance was written, um, we hadn't went live with municode yet, and municode renumbered some things. So it went from the chapter, title four, public safety, to chapter sixteen, article five, when it got munocoded.
Okay. That was basically the main question.
Yeah, and that's all it was, is just that the municode changed some of, got rid of titles and went to chapters and sections, and so it changed.
So as far as I'm concerned, I'm fine with tabling this. Um, I, we need motions.
You're fine with what?
I'm fine with tabling it until next month or until we have an attorney.
Okay. Yeah. I think we owe it to ourselves to get a legal opinion of it.
Yeah, so we would need a motion. Do you want to, I'll, I'll first it. Do you want to second it?
Sure, I'll second it.
To table until June meeting.
Who was the second? Okay, I got it right then. This'll just be an all in favor.
Hi.
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 Opposed?
Me.
Motion carries.
Um, moving on, discussion of new sidewalk ordinance, oh-four twenty-eight twenty-two-five B.
I guess we're discussing, I'm not sure, we need new sidewalk ordinance. The ordinance would really only apply to private property, I guess, because sidewalks on, along the state highway or state driven, as far as the ordinance goes. And then along Shabana Road, they're county driven.
Yep, and then all the side streets in town would be village-driven under this ordinance.
I, I really feel we do not need a new sidewalk ordinance. Frank, what do you mean by new? Is it replacing an old one or a new, new one?
Yeah, we have a, an old side, we have a sidewalk ordinance in place right now.
Actually, this one got voted in last meeting, so this one would have to be reviewed.
To replace an old one?
Apparently, Jen just said...
So you're talk, you're talking about a new, new one?
I'm talking about, we had one in place, and we, I guess, we approved a new one?
Yes.
And, uh, I don't think we should have approved a new one. I think the old one was fine.
Oh, okay, okay, I misunderstood you.
I can see how that could happen.
I, I agree with Frank on this, um, and I also think it's, it's not a good look for us to pass a new sidewalk ordinance and then immediately start pouring sidewalks that don't comply with the ordinance. So, uh, and it also, the ordinance does say, all sidewalks constructed within the village, um, unless otherwise specifically provided by ordinance, shall be constructed in accordance with the provisions. So, like, my reading of that is that we would have, to comply with this ordinance, we would have to, um, move up to five-foot sidewalks. But that also, you know, it also affects if somebody just wants to have a sidewalk between their back door and their patio. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't think this is particularly necessary to comply with ADA requirements. We can just have turnaround points, like, every, however many feet. So I think this is just kind of an unnecessary expense and one that we're not even following ourselves. So, you know, I'll, I'll be looking to, to change that ordinance at the next meeting, but right now, this is just discussion.
The other option would be is change to five foot and back to four feet.
I would assume we would have to have an ordinance that would, or a resolution that would amend it.
We could amend it.
Okay. Um, we don't have, uh, we don't have any resolution on the agenda, so, to comply with the meetings act, I think that we should have it on the agenda before we do any votes like that. So any, any other discussion on that?
Why was it changed to five feet anyway? Can anybody explain that?
I think that was a Chastain recommendation.
We, we got a letter from Chastain, ten or twelve pages. I guess my question on that letter is, what did that cost us for Chastain to, to bring this up to us?
I don't know. I haven't, didn't get a bill from them this month.
But there will be a bill coming, I'm sure, on this.
Let you know then.
Yeah, if you could let me know as well, um, how much that report costs in particular.
So I was going to say, I looked a little bit into the ADA requirements for sidewalks. There isn't a blanket requirement for five feet. Uh, it does say, though, if it is less than five feet, um, you have to have a five-foot by five-foot section every, I believe, two hundred feet for wheelchairs to pass each other. So I'm, I'm imagining that's the main reason why they just went five feet across the, across the board. Whether or not we should do that, I don't know. But I would say, instead of just having a measurement, maybe we should just say sidewalks should comply with ADA, as they should, per federal law, um, instead of having it explicitly, because the ADA changes.
So Bud, the, the sidewalks that you were looking to replace, so say they're four foot wide, are we going five foot wide on the new ones? Or, or would they stay?
It's on the listing what it is, you see?
So if it, if it's four foot wide, you leave them four foot wide?
Yeah, and I actually don't think that complies with the ordinance that we just passed. So I, I certainly don't think that we should be trying to enforce on private homeowners this ordinance that we're not even following. So any further discussion on sidewalk ordinance? Okay, we'll move on to discussion of new raffle ordinance, oh-four twenty-eight twenty-two-five A.
So I think that was mostly, I think, Frank, who wanted to talk about that, but I asked for it. Did you have more to add to it?
The only thing, I, I just think it's more village policy than, I, I just don't think we need it. I've been here for quite a while, and Denny has too, and we haven't needed it, and now all of a sudden, we're, we're, uh, putting an ordinance in just so we can find out what the raffle's all about.
No, to give them an opportunity to raise more of a maximum of five thousand dollars.
And it would save them the fifty dollar fee, Frank. That's what we were talking about earlier. If we don't have the ordinance in place, then they'd have to go to the county, and the county's going to charge them fifty bucks. Where if we have the ordinance, it's free for the non-for-profits, correct?
Yep, churches, educational, non-for-profits, which includes... Yep, churches, educational, non-for-profits, which includes like the lines.
So that makes more sense to me that, to save them the money, have the ordinance in place and save them the money.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We'll move on to seven B resolutions, consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh four twenty eight R six, administrative adjudication hearing officer agreement, um, if there's no further discussion on this, I think.
We're gonna table it.
We're gonna table it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll motion to table it.
Second it.
Senator Kellum, you're chairman, you can't make that motion.
No, according for the temporary thing, yes, they can vote, everything is normal.
Okay.
Roll call vote, sorry, I'm moving things. Kellum Walsh?
Yes.
Mark Stanley?
Yes.
Denny Sands?
Yes.
Frank Ottenheim?
Yes.
Joshua Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carried, it's tabled, I'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, moving on, B two, consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R ten, in support of the Illinois America Two Fifty Commemoration, Jen, does this cost us anything?
No, it, um, does not, I included in the packet the Two Fifty IL America handout that was given out at a mayor's meeting, um, there's a lot of information out there about it, I'm getting a lot of emails on it, um, they're just asking municipalities to, um, approve a resolution on it in support of it, um, in twenty twenty six, if we can tie anything in, and I know Melanie said she could look at it, we could partner with the library then, um, is, uh, doing something at like the Fourth of July Festival to tie into, um, America Two Fifty, so, so it's just kind of in support of it, doesn't cost us anything.
And doesn't obligate us.
And they do have some grants that are starting to be announced, because I just forwarded something to Mel to look into, um, Congressman LaHood, uh, for, so if there's something we're gonna do that falls under the grants, we could request grant money. So she should, probably not Wednesday, but near future, public affairs meeting, she should be able to provide a little more information, or I'll come and provide it, and we can kind of consider what we could do for the twenty twenty six and start applying for any grants that come available.
Okay, um, I don't have any problem approving that, that resolution. Anybody else?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, number three, nomination for village representative and alternate on DeKalb County's Regional Planning Commission.
Do you need to know anything about what this is?
I, I need to know everything about it.
So the Regional Planning Commission is a division of, uh, DeKalb County, Derek Highland is the chair of it, administrator of it, um, it meets, I believe, quarterly now, um, and the village has had a representative on it for probably twenty-plus years, um, and it's everybody who's represented the village on it, from trustees to a deputy clerk have all said how it's, it's one of the most value-added things they've ever went to, it's other village presidents, trustees, there's some clerks that represent, deputy clerks that represent the municipalities, then that's, um, discussion on what's going on with everybody with, uh, planning for their area, what other people are planning for their areas, sharing of notes, they have some presentations, they usually feed you at the meal, or at the meeting, um, and it's kind of a great, get to know people, get to find out how other people are doing things, and getting ideas of ways to do things in your own municipality.
And did we have a village representative and alternate in mind, or do we already have one?
Um, Denny was the alternate the last time this was voted on, and a former trustee was the representative, so it would be you guys figuring out who would like to be the representative and who would like to be the alternate, because I have to report it to the county.
Okay, um, and is there, is there any downside in not making a decision right now?
No, they'll just keep emailing me, asking me for it. So yes, but, they won't find us.
Okay.
They just had a quarterly meeting, so their next quarterly meetings, in April, they had a quarterly meeting, so their next one will be in July, if my math's correct.
Okay, um, so it's consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R eleven, to appoint representative and alternate on Regional Planning Commission, this is something I'd like to look into more, so I, I would like to table this personally, but, is there any discussion?
Does anyone want to be the representative or the alternate, I guess would be a question?
I wouldn't do it, nobody else wants to do it.
Because if nobody wants to, except Denny, then why don't we just?
I would be, I'd, I'd be the alternate, if Denny couldn't go, I'd go, that's it.
Okay.
So I guess we could pass that resolution then, couldn't we?
Okay, uh, motion to pass resolution R eleven, to appoint representative and alternate on Regional Planning Commission.
I'd make that motion.
I second it.
Is that a?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, now we have nomination for village representative on Shabana Pathway Committee, what's, what's the deal with this?
So, in the bylaws, I'll do it for both of these at one, Building Shabana Together and the Pathway Committee both have in their bylaws that the Village of Shabana will have a representative on their committees, and it's been agreed to, and the village has, um, Pathway, they've had a village representative on it since the Pathway Committee formed as a five oh one C three in twenty twelve, or something like that, um, it could be a trustee, it could be clerk, clerk's already on it, um, it could be anybody that works for the village, or could represent the village.
Okay, is that representative a voting member of that board?
Doesn't. Yes, you vote on the Pathway Committee Board.
Okay.
And the clerk is already on it?
Yeah, I'm already on it, I'm already a voting member.
Doesn't that work?
I'm willing to represent the, uh, village if the village board approves it.
So move.
I will second that motion. That's to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R twelve.
For the Shabana Pathway.
For the Shabana.
With Jen Morrison as the representative.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, we have?
Ditto for the B S T.
Okay, uh, nomination for village representative on Building Shabana Together, this is consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty five oh five nineteen R thirteen, to appoint representative on Building Shabana Together.
And once again, if no one else is interested, I'm already on there, happy to accept the village, I don't vote at village meetings, so all I'd be doing is reporting back to you, and then if there's anything for the board to decide, the board decides.
So move the clerk to be on the Building Shabana Together Committee.
I did wanna ask, were you interested in that?
Not really.
Okay. Okay, um, all in favor?
Frank motioned, we need a second.
Second it.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
It's, it's a little late to ask this question, with these, these two positions, I would hope that would be part of your forty-hour work that's been approved.
The meetings could be, I, I volunteer on them at this point, and if it continues that way, that's fine, the meetings, the bi-monthly, they, we meet as a board, every, full board committee every other month, so it's, uh.
And you'll volunteer, you'll volunteer to do that?
Yeah, I was already on it, I was, that wasn't gonna change, I wasn't active last year on either of them very much, but I'm the secretary on Building Shabana Together, so.
Okay.
Old business was hiring new building inspector.
Yeah, the building inspector, I would like, is there a way for us to put that out to bid, or post a, a job listing for a building inspector?
We can do a request for proposal, someone would need to write up some requirements, and we can post that out.
Okay. Is that something that the, the board would need to vote on, the request for proposal?
Board or committee would need to review it before it would get posted out.
Okay.
I think, sorry, uh, public affairs is in charge of code enforcement, right?
I don't wanna answer incorrectly. Yes, code enforcement's under public affairs.
Okay, Melanie, could you add that to the agenda?
It's too late for this.
Right, can't do it for Wednesday.
You got additions, but we can't vote on anything.
We don't vote in those meetings anyway, so it could be added to the agenda.
Well, for Wednesday.
So I say we just discuss it, uh, on Wednesday?
All right, talk about it on Wednesday.
If you Google out, you probably might be able to find some examples.
Okay, and?
Google's my friend.
What did you say the, the name of the document we wanna prepare us?
Request for proposals.
R F P.
All right, number nine, new business, A, discussion of side yard fence that's taller than six feet, possible zoning variance. I believe you have the information on that.
Yeah, so, uh, resident contacted me saying that they would like to look into installing a privacy fence that's taller than six feet on a, one side yard only, um, the reason being is because he thinks he has a nosy neighbor with, uh.
In Shabana?
With security cameras up pretty high, and he'd like to just block off his property.
So I guess we're, we just wanna see if the board would be amenable to that before he goes through the process?
Yeah, so, the zoning code, which I believe Jen attached.
Page one thirty-one in the board packet.
Says for residential areas, the, the fences can be up to six feet, um, so they would need a variance for that.
Personally, I would have no problem with it.
I put in for zoning variance.
Where it goes, does it block, um, people driving by, I mean, is it on the corner or what?
It's not on the corner a lot, no.
It's not gonna block anything?
Other than the backyard?
Other than hopefully the neighbors' cameras.
We'd have to, I guess we'd have to see what their exact plans are, but I would imagine it doesn't go all the way up to the street or something.
I think the homeowner just wanted, wanted to know that the village board wasn't just gonna say no, forget about it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So if that's a consensus, then they just need to do the variance application, follow all the checkpoints on it for what's needed for the zoning board?
Yeah, it's gotta be over six feet, correct?
It would be, I think he said seven or eight feet would be what he'd be looking for.
Okay.
And then that gets submitted to me, and I submit it all to the zoning chair to verify the zoning board doesn't need additional documentation before I schedule it.
Okay.
Takes fifteen days for the ad to run.
Okay.
After I get a, I have to get a confirmation for a zoning board date prior to running the ad, so it could take six weeks.
Thousand and six.
Could be less, but that's a safe number to put in there, that, depending on when they turn the application in.
Okay. If no further discussion, we'll move on to B, policies, first reading, um, I don't believe we're taking any action today, so this is just everybody review, bereavement, and jury duty, return to work, drug-free workplace, and weapon-free workplace, um, any discussion?
So just so you guys all know, the return to work policies required by our insurance company as of this year, um, so we have to, that one, we've gotta put in place for our insurance company, and more policies are getting required for different reasons, the other ones are because questions have been asked, um, especially on bereavement, jury duty, if we ever have a cause for a drug-free workplace issue, we need to have a policy in place, not that we will, but you never know, but for consistency.
All the time.
That's what I thought.
Might not happen in the next five years, but at some point, something could happen, and it would leave us exposed to that, especially if someone was injured or something.
Okay.
I didn't read the policies, but does that include drug screening for employees?
It stated that, yes, it does not require it, but it could be required if desired. At this point, it didn't require it, it's just for reasonable cause.
You gotta have DOT physical, Bud, so it's not as DOT physical anyway.
Do you have to get a sample for drug testing?
Yeah.
And they have to get those physicals annually.
They're good for three years, though, the DOT ones were.
It's in the policy that, it's annual.
Policy was done, I swear, because isn't that new that they're doing them three years in a time?
No, it's been a couple, it's been the last couple times.
Got it.
Any further discussion about the policies?
If you have any questions on any of them as you read through, feel free to ask me.
Okay, thank you, uh, discussion of posting of board packets on village website.
Yeah, that was me, I was wondering, would, would the board be willing to allow posting them before the meetings, so the general public can see them, I understand that would include additional, uh, uh, work for redacting anything that needs to be redacted, I'd be willing to take on that role, I don't know the legalities of that, since I'm not the FOIA officer.
The clerk needs to.
Clerk would have to do that, okay, so maybe.
Most of them are, don't have a lot of it, occasionally they do, but most, since I do the board packets, I'll already know, so, I don't get to vote, but I have no problem with it, it's just previous board had voted to post them within the ten-day requirement after the meetings, so you guys just need to vote.
Would that cause any troubles for you, you think, in terms of?
No, because I post the agenda after I email the board packet out, to make sure the email goes through.
Okay.
And then I can just post the board packet at the same time.
So the board packets are typically pretty set ten days beforehand?
No, 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 you get your.
Or how, or forty-eight hours?
If I'm not getting agenda items till Thursday at six-thirty PM cutoff, the board packet's not going out till Friday.
Okay.
Worst case, Saturday, but the goal is Friday afternoon, the board packet and agenda are out and done.
Okay, but forty-eight hours beforehand, you think?
Yeah, it's always forty-eight hours beforehand at minimum.
Is that a policy matter, can we change our policies to, to do that?
You guys just need to, motion and second, and all in favor, if that's what you would like me to do.
Any other discussion?
See anything wrong with it?
Do you think we need to, uh, is there anything wrong with it, yeah?
Yeah, let's see there.
I can add it to the clerk's job description, so you guys just need to vote on it.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion to have the clerk post board packets on village website prior to the regular meetings?
Maybe we should have a clause saying if, if, uh, reasonable, like?
To every reasonable extent.
Yeah.
Second?
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, I'll start it with the, uh, June meeting.
Thank you, uh, we have discussion of posting video recordings of meetings on village website.
That was also me, I noticed that we have an option for posting videos on the website, um, I tape recordings, I'm more unwilling to give a recording to Jen to post on the website, um, is that part of the hosting package with the?
Oh, yeah, as clerk, I just need the recordings supplied to me for media storage, and then I can also post them on the website.
And I'd like to expand on that, I think we ought to add a camera, so that way, when, uh, people are asking questions, because it's been brought up to me that they couldn't see who was asking the questions. And, and, uh, the audience.
I can look into that.
For the guests, so, um, maybe post them both, so that way, we're not just hearing a voice, or? maybe post them both, so that way we're not just hearing a voice or... You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I need another, uh, camera, but I can look into that for you.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, sometimes crazy goofy things happen, like a, if you had a streaker come through here, would you want that on the website?
I think in that case, we'd probably order it or something.
Yeah, I mean, just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Wake everybody up.
In that instance, the clerk would need an unchanged edition as well. Case it ever got, uh, omed or FOIA'd, FOIA'd.
Yeah.
Redacted for a FOIA, but just in case, legally, I'd have to have the unedited version, too.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we would have to vote on that if we want to implement that.
Yes. Need a motion and a second.
How would you want to word that?
Supply clerk, provide clerk with recordings and have posted on village website.
So if a recording got corrupted or something, would we be in any, in any trouble with?
I'd need the corrupted version to, and I'd have to make a note, log it. I'd have to have a log for all of them anyways, so. And then I'd have to log it and just note that it's corrupted, but that way, if they wanted to see it, they could see that it was corrupted.
Okay, and like if, let's say I forget to hit record, then we would have?
Just note, no recording made.
Okay.
I'd just use the meeting schedule to, uh, document.
Okay.
And if we do it for committee meetings, same thing, I'd just document the thing. Log whatever's uploaded and document anything that's not.
Yeah, I don't think we need something really hardcore here. We just motion to have the clerk upload videos to the village website.
They have ten days to do minutes and anything else from the board meeting. Is that good for that, or? Do you want, do, do you need to see it uploaded faster? Or can I just do it when I upload the minutes?
Yeah, so I'll motion to have the clerk, uh, upload video recordings of meetings on the village website within ten days after the meeting.
I second that.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Discussion on office hours and possible expansion of village office hours.
Yeah, that's basically, we have a full-time clerk now. Um, I don't know if we need to or not, but potentially we might want to look into having the office open for more hours. I'm not inside now either, just someone to bring up.
So we currently have office hours on Wednesdays from three-thirty to six-thirty, and Saturdays from nine to eleven-thirty. On Wednesdays, I'm in the office approximately ten-thirty, sometimes eleven to six-thirty, so I'm doing eight hours. That includes a half-hour lunch. Sometimes I go for breakfast before I go to the office. Sometimes I leave at noon and take a half-hour lunch. And three hours, I work most all Saturdays, so, um, I can take up to two a month off, but I work most Saturdays. I did talk to Mel, and we are both able to work five hours on Thursdays, like ten to three. That way, if one of us can't be in the office, the other should be able to be present in the office. So that is something that the board could consider. I'm in, um, right now, I'm averaging the eleven hours per week in office hours, sometimes more. The first week of May, I did eighteen hours, and the second week of May, I did twenty-two hours, and that was last week in the village office.
Um, I, I would.
Plus worked at home.
Yes. Well, last week, I'm kind of tired. Last week, I put in fifty-one hours, so it was a long week.
You've, your job's been made full-time, right, which is forty hours a week? So I would assume that if you work fifty-one hours, you'd get paid time and a half for eleven hours.
I can, but I was doing it by pay period, so I can just use the straight time against some doctor's appointments I have this week.
Aren't there, Frank, you're, once you're a full-time employee, aren't there federal regulations to be paid time and a half?
I could do time and a half for the eleven extra hours last week, comp time, like we did for the public works. I didn't do it on purpose. I didn't realize, Friday, after the special meeting, I had four hours of time working on agenda and board packet that I was two days behind on for the regular meeting tonight.
So let me ask you this. Are you okay with taking it as time and a half comp time? Okay.
I would say we should be required to, so I'll motion to approve that. Need a motion?
I think it's in the policy.
It's in the policy, okay.
Thank you.
Ben, you have a full-time job. Have you been told what the hours are, or are you just going to set your own hours?
Sometimes I work most of Sundays. Depends on what's going on for the week, where I left off on things. This, this, yesterday, I took the entire day off. I didn't work a few emails.
And that'll all be work-from-home hours?
Well, if it is on Sundays, yeah, I'm working from home.
I'm trying to find out what's best for you and maybe still get some more hours at the, at the village office where people could come in.
Well, I'm definitely do, we can definitely do the Thursdays, ten to three. Um, I could do some Tuesdays, ten to three, right now, because I didn't know this was going to come up. I have some appointments. I can't move off of Tuesdays. Because otherwise, I'd have to schedule them too far out for my revisits, so.
Understand that, but I guess.
But I'm flexible.
Set those hours up. Maybe the deputy clerk would have to come in for those hours or something.
Tuesdays, she can't, she works at the library on Tuesdays.
Then maybe we don't make hours on Tuesday, then.
Yeah, once I, once I get through June, then I won't schedule any more appointments on that day.
Well, I, I don't think it has to be that you have to work around scheduling appointments. I, I think, I, I just think there needs to be more hours than, than Saturday and Wednesday. I guess I would leave that up to your discretion to come up with a schedule.
You want posted hours?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can post hours on, like, one of the website, like a monthly schedule? I'm just, you know. So she could still do her doctor's appointments, but the office would still be open, and we would be able to all work together.
I want her to do her doctor's appointment, that's first and foremost.
Correct. So is there a way that maybe we could post it on a, 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 a monthly way that we could post the village hours, even on the door?
So right now, we have on the village calendar the office hours, right? I'm assuming we can add whatever.
We can expand out the Wednesdays to include the fact that I get there earlier. I can get a lunch sign for the door.
You're there that day anyway, Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that would find the call? Say a Monday or a Friday when people might be looking to come in? Can we expand the, the office hours?
Those are the days I have the most doctor's appointments usually, but I can, uh, I can look at it monthly.
Well, let's not even look at it right now until you get through these doctor's appointments, but.
No, those are going to be ongoing. I have appointments every month.
Oh, so do I, but.
So.
I, I think we need more hours that the office is open.
If I heard you right, you said Thursdays, ten to three, Tuesdays, ten to three, and Wednesdays, eleven to six-thirty, so you're giving an extra fourteen hours right there a week in the office, unless you have a doctor's appointment.
That would be twenty hours total a week.
I was just going with the extra hours
Oh.
that you were adding on, because you don't, right now, do office hours except three to six-thirty, three-thirty to six-thirty on Wednesdays.
No, this year, I've been there ten, ten.
Right, so you're giving, so I put in, you said eleven to six-thirty. I mean, you said you could, you go in at eleven, so you've just told them that you can work an extra fourteen hours a week.
Okay.
In the office.
In the office, that's what you said.
Tuesday, Thursday, the Wednesday and the Saturday I do, and I might take a Saturday off, though, um, would be twenty hours a week, and I can look further from there.
That seems better than what we have now, so. Put a schedule together and bring it to us, I would say, you can do.
Yeah, if you can definitely expand hours, Wednesday and Thursday, um, then, yeah. I guess just let the board members know, uh, what you can manage, because I think we all, and I've, I've heard this from residents, too, that they would really like to have the office hours expanded. Do we have any further discussion on that right now?
Deputy clerk is asking if she has to cover the hours when Jen can't be there during those posted hours, because some of them, she can't.
Well, the plan would be that the posted hours for the month would include considerations for any appointments I have that month.
Right.
Because I make my appointments four to six weeks in advance.
But just hypothetically speaking, if you get sick or something, so I'm trying to debate, do I have to then make a decision, do I go into the village and open, or do I keep the library closed?
No, I think we just put a sign on the door, so we can't be there.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay. Uh, moving on, item F, discussion and continue to pay village engineer to come to every meeting. Um, the village engineer is not here, though, um, Jen, would you be able to provide us with the contract that we have with the village engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if you could just email us that, I would appreciate it.
And then Curtis saw this on the agenda and emailed me this morning, and said he has no problem with not coming to every meeting. He's more than happy to submit a written report monthly to the village clerk, um, so it could be put in the board packet. He could come to the meetings on an as needed or requested basis otherwise.
Okay, I, I think the concern is that his hourly rate is something like two hundred dollars an hour. Um, and if he's coming to every meeting, we're paying him a lot of money to just, to just be here, uh, and he doesn't always have an update for us.
Yep.
So.
Does the board just want me to let him know that going forwards, just provide the written update unless requested to attend for something in discussion?
Yes, please.
Probably, like, if we have questions, I think we should be here, so it's a lot easier to communicate with them.
Yeah, and, and I assume if, if there's, if he has an update on one of the ongoing, we'll let us know, okay.
Yeah. And he'll let it know, he'll let, know in advance if it's something he thinks that questions may be posed. It's also something I could email out and say, hey, this is amendment or whatever that needs to go to the board, or like the whole bid thing that's going to happen.
And would you please provide me with Curtis's email as well?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Do you need the board consensus signed?
Yes. Need a motion and a
Second.
Second.
A motion, a motion to ask the village engineer to not come to every meeting?
Yeah.
Unless.
To provide a report monthly
Okay.
and only come when asked.
Okay. I'm going to motion to ask the village engineer to provide a monthly report and only come to the board meetings when asked to.
One second.
Is this an all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, last item, we have discussion on changing public comment policy.
So the old public com, public comment policy used to have been five minutes. Uh, it was changed to three sometime, I think, last year. I was wondering if maybe we wanted to expand it back to five, and also maybe just remove the signup requirement? Like, if you just want to show up and comment, you should just raise your hand and have an opportunity to comment. I don't think we would get signup sheet.
I agree with that.
I think they did the signup sheet so they can call people in order of what they signed, who they signed up for in order.
I find it keeping the signup sheet.
That way, that way it doesn't just go off on a tangent with people.
Yeah, I have personally made speeches that would longer than three minutes at, at these board meetings.
And the board can always wait for the time and let people go longer.
But I, I would be in favor of expanding the public comment to, to five minutes. Sometimes I think three minutes is just enough to get out what you want to say.
Motion and a second?
Or we want to just speak about it more and?
I think the five minutes is doable, but I do think we need a signup sheet.
All right, well, I'll motion to change our policy, uh, make, uh, public comment five minutes per person.
I second.
Is this all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're at the last item, which is number ten, adjournment.
Well, you added new village attorney.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I was still typing.
What would we do there in RFP to local firms or attorney firms to, uh?
Or just put, uh, dealers out to see who's interested?
I, I think if either case, we're going to need an RFP from them, know what they're going to charge. So I think we should put the RFP out right away to, uh, find out who's in it.
Do we have an RFP ready to go? Do we have a template RFP?
No.
Illinois municipal league have a template RFP, uh, RFP for that?
I can work on it on Wednesday.
Does, um?
There's, you can Google it, you can Google them out there.
Yeah, I guess if, if you can see if we can get an RFP ready to go, uh, the board can look at that at the earliest opportunity.
Would it be to ask other towns to recommend somebody, like Waterman's got somebody really good, or Salmonak has, or Decel has, or whatever?
Sure.
You could, sure, you could, but, I mean, if they're interested, they'll answer the RFP.
Well, not necessarily.
Yes, but if they notice that, right, maybe we should call up other village attorneys and see if they're interested.
You may only get one person that, you know, signs up or calls or... Part of recruiting is recruiting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, there's no problem with the board members going and looking, so.
Well, if I run across a lawyer, I may say, hey, I got a job for you.
Yeah. Okay, um, I guess there, there was one more item that I don't know if we placed, uh, but I asked about the temporary volleyball.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot about that one.
So there was a, a resident that asked, um, said, hey, there's nothing for kids to do in the summer. What if we put up a temporary volleyball net in Purdy Park? And I think that's a good idea. Josh and I would be willing to do it not at the village's dime. We would just, um, we would just want to dig two holes for posts and put up the temporary volleyball net. And then it can be taken down, you know, in a taller way or whatever.
You gotta check and see if the insurance covers it.
Yeah.
Well, the sports courts and stuff are covered, so that shouldn't be a problem. It's just, uh, make sure, yes, that the uprights are pounded in really well into the dirt and, uh, the ground. They don't recommend using the non-stake kind of ones, because they can get knocked over and people can get hurt.
Is there hours posted there at Purdy Park?
Open till dusk.
Till dusk, yeah.
It's on the signs.
I guess we'd also have to figure out where to put it. Does the board want to have input on that, I, I would think?
My thinking would be the far west end would make the most sense.
Back towards the Porta Potties? That would be the far west end. That's our property. Porta Potties ended the, the property line.
Yeah, I would think we would want to keep it away from the road as much as possible.
But then it's also the, the train tracks, but they're kind of far away.
There's trees there.
Yeah.
Either that or down a little further from the property line, in front of the trees. It'll have to be Julie before you can pound anything. You'll have to request a Julie.
Okay.
So Buddy and everybody else that is required can spray paint.
Do we need a resolution? Would Julie cost us money then?
No, Julie's free.
Okay. Okay, well, in that case.
Can I go back to the committee that's going to meet ones there, whatever? You decide where you want to put it?
Yeah, I think we should get a definite place of where it's going to go. I mean, it'll be temporary. It won't be like a permanent thing.
If the board is okay with it, we can get board approval and then we can figure out where we want to put it.
That's why I'm with you.
Yeah, it's just a matter of pounding a couple posts into the, into the ground.
Okay, motion second and an all in favor?
All right, I'm going to make a motion to allow us to put a volleyball net up.
I second it.
Can you not do it till after the Fourth of July though?
Temporary, so it can be removed for that day, right?
Yeah.
Because we use that whole area on the Fourth.
Yeah, and we, we can discuss that in, in a public. I mean, it's not going to go up before then, so we can discuss that as well.
I guess I got one more question.
Yeah.
Would that be a problem for you guys? You got to mow and do you see any problems there?
Well, you should be able to mow along and not go underneath, you know, mow around it, should because it should be high enough, because I can't remember what the height from the ground is for a volleyball net. It's what, four and a half, what, a foot?
Sounds all right.
I would hope that get, get, get more around, you know, when trimmed.
So you don't think that would be a problem with it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Did I second?
Yeah, Mark seconded it. It's install it at no cost to the village, right?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion carried.
That is the last item, so we're at number 10, adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carried.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, sure. I walked that door. I walked that door.
First time sharing.
My legs are sore. Hey, what are you doing on?
I do.
The worst thing I've been worried of.